So we'll, um, we'll call our, um, special meeting order. This is, um, uh, budget hearing. Uh, obviously, as everyone knows, before we approve a budget, there needs to be opportunity for public to offer feedback on the proposed budget. So anyone in the audience who wants to offer any comment on, um, the budget information, please, um, complete one of the comment cards that were on, uh, on the tables as you entered. And, um, you know, we'll definitely call you down to allow you to offer whatever comments you, you want, um, in that regard, too. Typically, comments are limited to three minutes, but for this, um, special budget hearing, um, it's not necessarily limited to three minutes, but we still would like to have you fill out a card so we can, you know, call folks down in an orderly fashion and offer whatever commentary they would like. Um, I guess aside from that, I don't know. Do you have anything to offer, Dr. Rob, before Mr. Obers gets started?
I do not.
All right. Well, Mr. Obers will turn it over to you, sir.
Great. And, uh, good evening, President Ross and school board members, and good evening to our public out there. This is for your benefit, but I need to speak in the microphone so we can record this. So I, that's why I'm not facing you the whole time and also with my PowerPoint here. So I guess, as President Ross mentioned, required by law every year, part of the formal adoption of the operating budget to allow the public an opportunity to review the budget and ask any questions they have. So that is the purpose of our meeting tonight. And, uh, the plan would be, hopefully, when, at the board meeting that follows this budget hearing, to, uh, have formal board action on the budget. So, uh, first of all, a couple of, just, just some assumptions that were built into the current budget. And I will remind everybody that at the state level, which determines our per pupil funding amongst other, and our special funding for other aspects of our district, uh, the budget has not yet been finalized. There, there have been three proposals that were issued, governor, the House, and the Senate, over the last few months. And they need now to get together and come to determination as to what the final budget should be, not only for the school aid fund, but also for the general fund of those, at the state. So the assumptions, especially on the revenue side, uh, we've built in this budget are, again, based on some of the conversations, dialogue that's taken place so far, but we won't know for sure until the state budget is finalized. And we are hopeful that'll happen, uh, maybe prior to the 4th of July recess or shortly thereafter. So for the current year, uh, built into this budget is a foundation allowance increase of $500 per pupil. Uh, our current foundation amount is 8,700, so this would increase it to 9,200. Again, that is the largest source of operating revenue is a foundation allowance, which comes from the state. The, the state determines that. Um, the at-risk are what we call our 31A dollars and our great start readiness, which is our preschool programs. Those funding, that funding for those two programs together are budgeted at, uh, 18.4 million. We've had a lot of discussion the last, gosh, year and a half now about, about ESER funds. There are three buckets of ESER dollars. Um, we have completed spending on the first bucket, ESER 1, ESER 2, and ESER 3. Uh, we have spent some of those dollars, but there's still dollars available. So this budget, uh, assumes that we'll spend about $36 million of ESER 2 and ESER 3 money. Now, ESER 2 has to be spent by the, essentially, end of next fiscal year. ESER 3, uh, we have until 2024, although there's just been some recent, um, additional guidance that came out late last week that may extend some deadlines. In terms of the expense assumption, uh, our largest cost factor in our budget every year is our people costs, which includes the base compensation plus the benefits. Um, we are, we have seven unions that we are negotiating, at least the financial piece for all the unions. A couple have been settled, several others are still in process. But we have assumed overall about a three and a half percent increase in base compensation in this, in this budget. The hard cap, which is the maximum amount that we, as a district, can pay toward health insurance, that amount is determined annually by this, um, Treasury Department, the state, and that is going to increase 1.3% on January, uh, 21st, 2023. We, we know that, that's been determined already. As far as the departmental budgets, um, we essentially tried to hold them at the level they were in the current year, but as needed, we made strategic adjustments to it. As many of you are aware, we've just completed a strategic plan. That'll be our focus for the next few years. Certainly, we made some expense adjustments related to implementation of that plan, which will begin in the 22, 23 year, where we also need to make some additions. With those in mind, here's what the numbers look like in the general fund budget. The first column there, going left to right, is our final budget at the end of the 2021 year. Um, and then the, the middle column there, appropriations that amended, uh, last board meeting, the school board approved amendment two to our 2122 budget, and that's what that middle column reflects. Uh, and then the proposed budget, the last column there, farthest right, is the proposed budget for 2223. Just quickly, the local sources, that represents the portion of the foundation allowance that's funded with, uh, uh, property taxes. State sources restricted are some of those 31A dollars I talked, at-risk dollars I've mentioned. The unrestricted portion is the portion of the, of the foundation allowance that's funded by, by the state. And then federal restricted, most of that, uh, is title, the title dollars and our ESER spending. There's a few other programs that are within that restricted amount. So we're looking at total revenue for the current, or for the budgeted year 2223 of just under 258 million. Uh, there's some transfers between funds of 815,000. So total revenue and other financing sources, you can see there, far right, near the bottom, We are projecting to begin our next year, the fund balance of, of just under $14 million. So we have the ability to appropriate all that 272 million dollars by law. However, there is also a, a, um, board requirement that we maintain at least a 5% fund balance, preferably a 10% fund balance, or realistically, we cannot appropriate all that and get down to a zero fund balance. That would violate board policies. On the expenditure side, we break it into four major spending categories. Total instruction, and that is really our, our, the dollars we put into the buildings and the teachers and the curriculum. Support services are, uh, again, the, the support staff that, that support our building and instruction. Community services are various costs that we, uh, programs we do with the community. We do have some facility and building improvement, uh, in the general fund budget. We are still completing the spending of our 175 million dollar bond that was approved by voters back in 2015. Most of our capital improvements over the last six years have been funded with bond dollars, which is why we don't need to use general fund dollars for that. So our total expenditure is budgeted for 2223. As you can see there, 258,477, some transfers. Total appropriations of 258,577,000. And then as far as fund balance goes, as I just mentioned, there is a board policy that says our fund balance should be between 5 and 15% with a goal of 10%. You can see, at the end of last year, we came out with a $19 million fund balance, just under 13%. Based on amendment two for the current year, we're projecting to come out at 13, almost 13.8 million, just under that 10% goal. And then for the 2023 budget, um, we add a little bit to fund balance. We also have more revenue, so that percentage goes down a bit from nine and a half, or 9.4 to 9.2%. So well within the range established by board policy and certainly very close to that 10% goal that the board looks to. So, uh, that is the general operating budget that, and this was shared with the board last, uh, the work session last week and, and, uh, shared with the community today. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions from our public out here.
Any questions from the audience? Like, no, there being none.
You're good?
Oh.
You can ask a question of the budget, sure. Yeah.
How much is funded going towards curriculum? And, uh, knowing that Governor Whitaker just passed a bill to teach by digital literacy in all of the state schools, uh, is there any funding for that?
Uh, not, there's not funding in this current budget for that, as you just mentioned, because it's, it's brand new. But we have been, over the last five years now, replacing our core curriculum. And I think virtual, core curriculum, uh, science, math, English language arts, social studies. Those curriculums are in excess of, each one of them, excess of a million dollars. So most of the time, we pay that over a period of time, two or three years. So I think we have a couple of years on some of those still remaining. Those payments are within the current budget. Any new, and, and from time to time, new curriculum needs come out during the year. And, um, if we have to spend for additional curriculum, then that's what the amendments are for the budget. We do an amendment one to our budget every year, usually in January, and then a final budget amendment two, as I mentioned, usually in, in late May, to reflect those changes from our, and it'll also, our amendment one will also reflect, uh, what we, you know, as I just mentioned, the state budget's not finalized yet. So once the state budget is finalized, once we have our, our first count date in the fall, then there's always budget adjustments related to those kinds of things that occur. So, did that answer your question?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
One more question.
Sure.
The budget goes to, towards athletics for the district.
Rhonda, do you have that in there? Rhonda's a finance director, and she has a lot of the guts of it. It's, I believe the general fund, it's, it's near the million dollar, um, and then we... Oh, thank you.
... 2.8 million in expenditures for athletics.
Yeah. And, and we also have some philanthropic, um, support for our elementary and middle school athletics that are embedded in here also, so.
Got another question behind you there, Mr. Obers.
Just a clarification on that last answer. The, when athletics is funded, is that, does that count personnel that are associated with it? So, um, full-time assistant coaches, et cetera, is that?
Yeah.
Okay. So anyone associated with athletics that?
Yeah.
That fits in there. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, and so, my question is, um, which were the departmental budgets where you saw a strategic adjustments account for the, the strategic plan?
Well, it, it, it was, it was, you know, all over the place, from our, from our communications budget to, each of our departments have personnel that are involved, were involved in the developing the, I'm gonna call it the work plans for the various things. So, um, you know, so as an example, you know, Rhonda, over here, our finance person, she led one of the teams, and there are some additional costs associated with, with our time and effort, business office. So virtually all of it, uh, the PD area, special development, there's certainly an area, the diversity program, there's, there's area there. We're looking at hiring a, an additional person. I can't remember what department that's budgeted in Rhonda, but, right, aren't we gonna hire a, someone associated with a strategic plan? Maybe not. Yeah. So it's, it's, it's all those, at this point, it's kind of estimated till we actually get into it and see what the costs are. And, and we still have some ongoing outside consulting help as we implement that, too. And, uh, those costs are, are embedded in one of the, um, departmental budgets also.
Uh, well, the second question is, um, if, how, can you just walk us through departmental budgets, how it's steady for spending, but then how ESER revenue comes on top of that and, and for these departmental budget projections?
Well, you know, the, the, again, I, I'll, first of all, I'll say that, that the vast, as I said earlier, about, about 75, 80% of, of our total expenditures are in people costs. And so that's a given. I mean, obviously, the budget, or the departments all have employees, their costs are in the departmental budget. The ESER dollars, and as you may or may not know, about a year ago, we, we developed our initial ESER budgeting plan, and that was very, and then to tell a couple of things, you know, ESER 3, there are some specific ways we have to spend, well, there's specific ways we can spend the money, period. ESER 3 added some more specific things. So we looked at how we could spend that. We, you know, obviously, put an internal team together, we met with stakeholder groups to get their input, and we developed that budget. So that's being spent alongside with our general operating budget. Now, a year into it, as we are now the ESER spending, you know, things have come to light, and so we've had additional stakeholder meetings over the last couple of months. We were looked at over the summer of, of, uh, adjusting that, that initial investment plan of ESER money. One reason we had to do it is we have to file applications for this ESER money with the state, and anytime you make a change, no matter how big, large or small, we have to file an amendment. When the ESER 3 dollars were allocated, where we had to file the initial application, all the ESER 3 dollars were not yet available for our use. They have now become available, so we'll, we'll minimally need to file amended application for ESER 3 to budget for those additional dollars that we didn't have available to us. And so that, that'll happen, as I mentioned, over the next several months. We will, we look at that and plug in where we need the ESER money to basically achieve some of our goals with the ESER money. Yes?
Following up on that ESER, with those ESER money questions, at what point you all had kind of first, first presented, you know, some initial budget information around that? I remember that there had been a very brief conversation about, um, maybe putting some of that money into the students' families.
Into what?
Via participatory budgeting capacity with some of those ESER budgets. So I just wondered if those conversations had continued at all or give any more information about that?
Well, again, we, we've had, as I mentioned, the, the meetings, we've had stakeholder groups. The stakeholder groups, well, first of all, we had internal groups made off of, of, of building administrators, central office administrators. We met with the parent action leaders, which are by and large, obviously, parents of students as a group. We met with student groups, we met with the teachers. So we've got significant input, um, from those groups initially, as I just mentioned the last couple of months, and follow-ups, where we can see some changes. I believe the plan will, would be, and again, I'll have to defer to my colleagues because I'm retiring June 30th, so what happens? What happens after that is out of my control. But anytime there's a major, it's been recommended at the state level, we have major changes to our ESER funding, that we go through this process, and we have a similar type hearing like today, which I would anticipate we would do, because again, we have a big chunk of money that we didn't budget initially, we'll have to do with our application. So that would, at this point, I think, be the opportunity, although, again, um, after I'm gone, I think we decided to do something differently than that, then that'll be up to, up to the superintendent and the new CFO.
So, I, sorry, I had two questions. One was, uh, are the ESER funds, are they reflected in this, in the revenue streams on this?
Yeah. If you look at, I mentioned, uh, get it back up here. If you look, uh, again, the proposed budget line, the federal restricted the 56.9 million, that's where the ESER dollars reside on the revenue side. Now, on the expenditure side, they're built throughout our various departmental budgets, instructional budgets, whether it's high school, elementary school, middle school expenditure, those kinds of things. So, uh, but the revenue comes in through that line. I mentioned the 57.9 million. It's more than just ESER money. There's ESER money, there's title money in there, there's other grant money that's restricted by, by federal government. And why it's restricted is because we have to spend that money for a particular purpose. In this case, for the 15 spending categories, the ESER, um, programs allow us to spend those dollars.
Has the, uh, has the proposed spending changed from last year? Because I, I was looking at the one from 2021. Has there been a different one that's come out for proposed?
A different ESER investment plan you're talking about?
Yeah.
Not yet. That's why I was just addressing with this lady over here, that we, we, we've set this, the groundwork to make some, and, and the real, the reality is, through this past year, we've, we've actually made changes in spending as things have progressed. There's things we couldn't predict back in, back in July, when the initial plan was, was developed, we didn't have near the information we have now. And information just keeps coming out, almost, almost weekly. As I just mentioned, a new guidance came out Friday of last week, Thursday or Friday last week, that may allow us to get an extension on the spending. We've had some challenges with everything going on in the economy in terms of supply chain holdup, talent shortages that, and we have, you know, excess of $100 billion of ESER money in total. To spend that by, you know, middle of 2024 is, could be difficult, that extension because of that. So we wanted to wait, the, it's, it's very cumbersome, because we have to track all this ESER money separately. ESER 1 we have to track separately, ESER 2, ESER 3, in addition to all the other grant programs we have to track. So we're trying to limit the amount of, as I just said earlier, we have to, we have to file an amendment every time we change the spending in order to get paid for it. The way the ESER programs work is we make the expenditure, then we apply back to the state to get reimbursed for it. So we get, we, we have to spend it first before we get it back. We only get it back from the state if it's actually on the application. So we've made expenditures that were not on the initial applications, we're waiting to get reimbursed, but we also don't want, we don't want to amend those applications every month, because it takes a lot of time, and the state has to review them again. They can actually go back and review prior decisions they've made. And so we're trying to wait till we have, as I mentioned, this case, a, a, a large change, a large new budget before we make those amendments. So there have been changes, and we'll continue to be, be changed, we'll continue to see changes be made. But I would anticipate that we would have to, we will file an amended ESER 3, perhaps an amended ESER 2 within the next three or four months, if you will, because we, we want to get reimbursed for some of these things, and until we get the application to reflect our actual spending, we're holding the bag in terms of reimbursement. Larry?
Does that then come out of the fund balance? Does it come out of like, just the?
Well, it, it comes out of our cash flow. So we, again, we have other sources of cash that we, that can hold us over, but it gets to be some, gets to the point where you need to be reimbursed for that, because your, your cash flow can't, can't continue to be maintained.
Larry, when we, um, when we spend the money, it is noted on the purchasing agenda where the funds are coming from.
Yes.
So I think if someone, that obviously doesn't help us to understand what, what will be spent, but you can tell what ESER funds have been spent just by looking at our purchasing group. Every time we spend money, buy something or pay for something, a service, et cetera, that, that comes from those funds, it's noted where it's coming from, including the ESER funds. It, it usually says one, two, or three.
Yeah, it does. And I believe the next couple of months, Dr. Rob, there's a little bit of ESER spending update.
We're planning on having an ESER spending update, I think we said August?
Yeah. The business office, as I mentioned, it's, it's, we have spreadsheets, and we're moving, you know, expenditure categories between, um, the ESER buckets and, and another, another pro, big program we got in the middle of this year was, uh, there was another technology program called emergency connectivity funds. We got three and a half million dollars of that. Some of that expenditure's had hardly been budgeted to be an ESER expenditure. So we're moving between what the ESER initially down to this ECF fund. And so those are the kinds of things as the business office, we're dealing with. And, um, we have a year-end audit every year, which would include any of our grant spending like ESER. And so the process of closing our books, which will, which is really happening now, but will go on through July, that's when we, we firm up all these ESER spending, and so we know, um, how much we've spent in each particular program and what the, what the amendments would need to be to the ESER 2 and ESER 3 application. Again, ESER 1 is done, so that's out, that's been spent and closed, so the ESER 2 and ESER 3, the big ones, are still out there. Gus?
I was just curious how much money is getting directed towards our security schools?
Um, I don't know what the, I don't know what the, we have a budget for that, is in that?
It's included in the operations and security or security as a gather, according to the state's protocols, so, um... Yeah, included together, out of the general programs, it's almost 17 million, and out of grants, it's about 11.4 million. But that's operations and maintenance, so it's combined between our custodial, but it also includes our district insurance. It includes the electricity and the natural gas, so it's got some bigger expenditures in there as well, and not just like the security officers that you see in the building, so. On that side, operations and maintenance is a bigger portion of, at those larger numbers, but, I don't know if you're gonna have to talk to my head to answer, because I get scary.
But security also includes, um, technology and training for staff as well.
Yeah, and then, um, we use EPS as a security, um, for our alarms and our monitoring and all of that, that's included as a security budget as well.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of security staff, just like a lot of other areas in the district, we, we have, we have significant openings in there for security officers. We've been struggling to hire security officers. Realistically, the eight years I've been around, that, in terms of the people side of security, that number has been pretty, remained pretty stable throughout, at least the times I've been here. So, yes?
Um, when you mentioned that you engaged with the PALS and also student advocacy group within the process, was it limited to those groups? And what were the student advocacy groups?
Pardon me?
So when you mentioned that you involved, were you engaged with the PALS?
Yes.
Or the parent action leaders, and also the student advocacy groups, or the student groups?
Yeah, it was a superintendent's student leadership group.
Okay. Was it only to them, or was it, was there like average to other students as well?
At this point, it was to that, it was to that group.
Okay.
Which, which, which represents...
There went well beyond that in many of the different staff in the community meetings. So it was, there was some preliminary groups, our folks groups specifically with the PALS and with the scholars advisory council, but there were several other opportunities beyond that.
By that, you mean like, we, we held several community, um, sessions and conversations, not just hosted by us, but hosted by community partners and...
Oh, are you asking about the strategic plan or the ESER plan?
I was talking about the ESER plans.
Okay. No, the, the, for the ESER stakeholder group, it, it was a student leadership council. And, and they're pretty well, um, dialed into the needs, the particular buildings that they, that they come from. I was frankly, very impressed with that group and their knowledge of, of everything, and their, they have some great ideas that we've, we've, it's related in particular to, to the mental health and social emotional learning aspect that we built into some of our programs we had this last month in May, so. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your questions.
All right. Well, I guess, um, I guess that brings us to a close, although awkwardly, um, for probably the third time, I forgot to get a roll call to start our meeting.
We're all here.
We're all here.
Yep. So I've taken roll, but we do have some public comment as well. So I do believe that some of the people who completed a that some of the people who completed a card asked questions, is there anyone who-
Complete a card who didn't get a chance to speak?
Right, who or still has for their comment, okay. So, if you'd like, we can just call the names, and if you've already had your statement of hands.
Yeah, so I guess Jose Rodriguez, did you have more to offer, or you got your question on? Yeah, come on up then if you have other, yeah, for sure. Abigail Romero, are you a question answered, or are you?
They're all for the comments.
Okay, you can join us then.
And then Alexis, is this Iceland?
Oh.
Alexis, Iceland, looks like?
Nuland.
Nuland, I said, I apologize.
Sorry.
Okay, Mr. Rodriguez, feel free.
Yeah. So, I am actually a former GRPS staff member, I most recently served Alger Middle School, and so I recognize that in our, in our society now, there's a lot of, there's a lot of disputes between, you know, having police, having security, having, you know, what's better for school safety, what's better for community safety? So, we've had a few deaths recently in our school, and I wish we had had more counselors, I wish we had had more social workers, we, I don't think we have a full-time social worker, we don't have, we, actually, I think we had an open spot for another social worker, but then we have three open spots for full-time security, and it's just, I honestly think it's a shame that we prioritize that over, you know, proactive solutions to help our students versus reactive solutions, and so I would, I would ask you all to prioritize positions such as counselors, social workers, therapists, over school security, because, you know, in the event that a student passed away, they got shot, I don't think that school security really served a great purpose to our students. I mean, I love the people who are in that position as, you know, as colleagues, but I don't think that they're there to serve our students in the ways they needed to be served, as well as, I used to work at North Park Montessori and theme schools, I love theme schools, they're great for our students, but I also know that we don't have any security there, we don't have security allocated, you know, three security officers allocated to an upper-class, more affluent school in Alger, one of the lowest performing schools in City Middle High, one of the, obviously the highest school in Michigan, the highest performing school exists in the same district, and I don't think that that should be a reality that we live in today, and so that's my public comment, and I appreciate you all for listening.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Romero? You can use the microphone, please.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Abigail, and I'm going, and I'm going into 8th grade at City High Middle School. I recently finished my first year at City, and while it has pushed me to be a better student academically, I do not have enough support from my counselors. City High Middle, City High Middle School and many GRPS schools need more counselors of color that can help, that can help students feel supported in their schoolwork and relate to students of colors' life experiences. I'm the first in my family to be able to receive an education. I spend so much of my, of my life at school and growing as a student and person, counselors should support that. This is why it is important to me to have more counselors of color, more importantly for students like me. GRPS has so many students of color, especially large Black and Latinx populations, and yet we don't have enough student counselors that can walk us through our education and help us in challenging schools like City High Middle. Funding long-lasting counselors would help me better navigate, navigate school and also learn about what to do during and after the school year, to be a better, to be a better year-long learner. Now that GRPS has even more money from ESER funds, we can increase the amount of counselors of color with diverse experiences in GRPS, and pay them rights to stay with us long-term and really, and really get to know the students they work with. So I ask that you fund more diverse counselors in our schools so that students can be supported in our learning journey. Thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you. And Ms. Anuwa?
Hi, my name's Alexis, I, that was my fiance who spoke, so he worked for GRPS, and I have several friends who either have worked for or do work for GRPS, and honestly, a lot of them are leaving or have already left. I think that, like, a couple of them who left in the middle of the school year are people of color, and they, like, genuinely believe that in their time with GRPS, they're actively harming their kids, where, like, they're, they're not being supported the way that they need to be, and, like, especially at schools like Alger Middle School, you know, the neighborhood schools, they are just not getting the kind of resources that schools like City are getting. So, you know, these schools are overpoliced, and that, like, that money that's being spent on three security officers could go to those mental health professionals, like, behavioral issues in kids that young don't need to be policed, they need to be worked through, like, they need help and support. So, you know, we should be allocating that money to benefit our students and not punish them. So, kids and teachers are at the heart of the school, as the district, like, they really are the ones who mean the most, who, like, support all of this and are going to be supporting our community, so, you know, they're, they should be getting a large portion of the money benefiting them and not harming them. And then there's, you know, a lot of money that goes towards marketing and advertisement and things like that within the school district, and I think it's important to acknowledge that if you're investing in the things that matter, in the neighborhood schools and all of your schools equally, then those schools are going to speak for themselves, like, you'll have a whole school district that is good, that people want to go to, and not schools that people are like, oh yeah, like, nobody wants to work at Alger Middle School, nobody wants to work at these other schools. I think it's important that we acknowledge that these schools also need to be improved, and that that advertising money could benefit the whole school district if you did that. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And we have a couple more, Karina and Natalie, did you still want to come down? And then Deandre as well. Deandre, if you want to, just come to the front row when they're done, you can step on up, thank you.
All right, hello, my name is Natalie Rodriguez, I'm currently entering my senior year at City High. All of my life, I've been going to the GRPS schools or the district, mostly MLK and Lampford and then to City High Middle, and reflecting at, reflecting on my experiences as a student in the GRPS district, I've seen the lack of, the lack of representation of POC school faculty reflecting these students at these schools. There's a huge population of Latinx students at City High Middle, and, again, this isn't reflected within the teachers and the faculty there, and growing up with not seeing, you know, the Latinx community being represented within the schools, kind of creates this, like, self-doubt of not being able to succeed, especially in, like, my own community, and having these funds to go to POC teachers would really help not only myself, but other students in the community that identify as myself, to know that they can reach high levels of success, whether that's being a teacher or having other careers within the community. So, again, having these fundings going to teachers that can really help and guide students within the school and their communities would really help with that self-connection to the community and individualism and kind of guiding of what you want to do in life and be successful, and thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karina, I am also a student at City High Middle School, I'm an uprising freshman. I have also been a part of Grand Rapids Public Schools for my whole entire life, and I've seen that every year that I've attended, students do not get the right nutrition and food options during school lunch and breakfast. It's an important thing for me because as a student who is expected to perform and live as an IB learner, in and outside of the classroom, it's important so I can actually use my skills, and to have better improved meals that have higher in quality and they're locally produced, it would be a lot more better for me to learn, because I see that many kids waste this food because it's not what they, it's not appealing to them. Most of our food is packaged and processed, and if you were to serve this food daily throughout the school year, when you're working hard to get good grades, and being involved in extracurriculars, I'm sure that you would also want better food. I would even invite you to come out and eat for a week at GRPS schools to see if you would like this food. A lot of students don't get the energy that they need from this, from these meals that GRPS gives us, and for students that can't afford to bring their own lunch, that's good for them, but for us who rely on school food, it's very hard for us to academically and physically go through the day when the food isn't good for us, or we can't eat that food. With additional money from the ESER funds, better meals are possible, so I ask that you fund better school meal options, work with local businesses to get us fresh foods, and also support students' mental wellness through the food. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
How you doing, everyone? My name is Deandre Jones. I wanted to talk about esports. I know that the budget is coming up, I spoke at the strategic planning meetings, I gave a lot of different things and ideas that I feel like the school district should invest into, like, sustainable renewable energy, I would like to see solar panels, sustainable improvements, or renewable energy improvements to the school district. I know that a lot of these schools and students, parents, they don't know anything about sustainable energy, how solar panels can actually reduce their bills or their utilities or geothermal energy, how it heats up a building in the winter and in the summer it keeps it cold, and so there's a lot of different things and disparities that we have in this community, and I believe to help the mental wellness and just the wellness of our staff, the wellness of our students and our parents, I believe there should be some type of sustainable renewable energy improvements to our school district. I've reached out to the athletic director, I've talked to the secretary, and I was supposed to have had a meeting with them twice to talk about esports, this is a growing space, a couple, I believe last year and sometimes this year, I came here and talked about esports as an extracurricular activity for our students, this is a growing space, it actually surpassed the NFL now, and so I've been very invested, I even invested my own money into United States Green Building Council, they just recently had their Michigan Clean Energy Summit and Climate Change Summit, these are things that I've, one of those things I actually sponsored, or one of those things I just attended, it was like a hundred and something dollars, I was one of the few Black people there, and so I'm very well invested in the community, want to, of course, buy the Adelante High School, which is in a predominantly African-American Hispanic neighborhood, but also make sure that I'm equal and equitable in offering those same opportunities to the people, just trying to help the disparities within our community. I would like, if possible, I can have a meeting with the esports or the athletic director to talk to him about esports, because it's not just, it's not just a video game or somebody just sitting in front of a TV screen, like, there's jobs being created, there's scholarships being created, there's tournaments where there's millions of dollars could be won, and kids in our community can potentially take care of their families just from playing video games, and we're making more than a lot of people around here, and so I would like those opportunities to be created because we all want better opportunities, we want to be economically, I would say, competitive, there's no real competition for our students or ways for them to grow, especially in the technology space, decoding space, and so I would really like for you guys to think about the sustainability improvements for our school district, all of the schools, being able to reduce the funds and possibly get those funds and bills reduced, to be able to reinvest those dollars into our community, or creating a fund where people could have a process, we can have a school district process where people can give feedback on different things that they like to see within their school district and the area that their students or kids go to, and so I would like you guys to also think about esports as an option. I'm working with a lot of people, I'm going to a esports trade commission in Chicago, that's my hometown, like EA Sports, all of these major companies are going to be there, and if you know me, I love to network, I love to create genuine relationships with people, and I'm going to do my best to try to bring those resources back here, so, I mean, there's tournaments in North Carolina, EA Sports is hosting the event, like, 8,000 people attended one of these events, like, they filled up all of the hotel rooms, they used an arena in the convention center, we have those same things here. I just got done talking to somebody that's actually, just talked to Cloud Nine, which is actually a $100 million esports company, like, I'm really serious about this vision, I have the vision, I have the passion, I have the work ethic, I'm willing to work with the school district to try to make sure we can roll out even a pilot project here for our students, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Guess we'll, we'll take, close this meeting, and we'll take a break, and we'll come back and actually have a roll call at 6:30 for our official meeting, for sure. Thank you all for joining us.